Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the state and the city in which we live, guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ's name.
Amen.
This is the November the ninth regular meeting, or November ninth, 2021, regular meeting of the Newland City Council. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of October the 26th, 2021, before y'all entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. As most of you know, a few minutes ago, this council decided to continue the public hearing on the annexation of Poplar Place, and I need a motion to amend today's agenda to include that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, several boards and commission appointments. The first couple of them are development authority for your terms. Ms. Jenkins.
I'd like to reappoint Marcus Cook.
Second.
Motion to second. We reappoint Marcus, DeMarcus Cook, to the development authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next, Mr. Correctco?
Next agenda, please.
All right, thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Next agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. DeBose?
I'd like to appoint Charlotte DeBose-Lensford.
Second.
All right. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda today is the annual report from the Newman, Newman Urban Redevelopment Agency.
How's everybody?
Hey there.
Hi, Jared.
Okay, this is the, pardon me?
How are you doing?
Great, great, great. I'm Gerald Walton, by the way.
Walton.
Walton. Hmm? Okay, this is the 2021 annual report for the Newland Urban Redevelopment Authority. On the screen, you can, you can see the list of the members. The GIC team serves in a dual capacity, so we're both GIC members and we're both members of the NURA. Okay? It should be noted that in addition to the nine appointed members, the liaison and staff also serve as GIC team members. Next. Okay, this is the top-level national registry district nomination. On the screen is a list of the current members as well as the support staff. Oh, my bad. Sorry about that. Let me move on. Okay, now, top-level national registry district nomination. We have been approved to move forward with our national registry nomination, register nomination. HPD asked us to include the Farmer Street Cemetery, which has been submitted separately, so we'll be, so we'll be combining the two applications together. This is our 100 East Washington Street project. The NURA has accepted a bid for the project, and we are in the process of having the contract signed. We are hoping to have this project completed by the spring of 2022.
Okay.
Okay, next. These are our paint day proposals. The tornado, the tornado and supply issues impacted both of our paint days, paint days for this year. We are planning on moving forward with the program, and hopefully we can get it back on track in 2022. Our GIC training and alumni recertification. Our GIC team was recertified for 2020 for a two-year period. As part of the recertification process, at least 14 members are required to attend training each year. All right, next.
Hey, sir, real fast, could I see?
Sure.
GIC, could you explain that for everybody? The GIC team?
GIC team?
The GIC, G-I-C-H.
Georgia Initiative for Community Housing.
Get Tracy to help me out with that.
It's called the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. It is an organization. What they do is they work with the state, and it's focused on housing, and we have to try out to become a member and get selected. We did that, and as part of the alumni, we have to be recertified every year. It allows us to apply for things like our community development block rate on an annual basis, and also gives us additional points with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is our NURA goals for 2020. We want to hold two paint days in the fall and in the spring, and in previous years, we have been doing that. Just like I said on the last slide, this year with the tornado and the supplies, it's been kind of, it's kind of hard for us to do it this year. Okay, we're going to submit the final national register nomination application. We're going to complete the rehab for 100 East Washington Street, and hopefully to begin on additional homes after we complete that one. And we're going to apply for the ARPA funds to further develop our affordable housing program, and we're going to continue to attend training geared towards affordable housing opportunities for here in Calhwy County. Okay?
How is this being by the way?
Sir, 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 well, this is not an opportunity for discussion for, I'm sorry. We appreciate your, your help with this, Mr. Walton, and I think there's going to be some actions for this council that's going to add some workload to your group.
Okay, that's fine.
We appreciate your.
And I just want to say one thing. I want to thank the council. Earlier, we were having trouble getting the members that you guys appointed to participate. We were having trouble having a quorum, but thankfully, that's not a problem now. We've got full participation, and we're able to have a quorum, and everything seems to be moving pretty good.
Thank you very much for your hard work. We appreciate it very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda today, Mr. Phillips, do you have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I don't, I don't have anything today. Public hearing, under new business, this is a public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage license for Carvello's Pizza Company on 7 Le Grand Street. The reason for this change is personnel. This is a public hearing on this issue. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue? I've seen no one come forward. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Everything is in order, and I see that there are several people here today from Carvello's with their shirts on. Thank you for being here. I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. We approve the request or our application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next, several items, the next four items, in fact, are not public hearings, but they're hearings where we sit in judgment regarding the issue before us, and all of these are code violations of our alcohol beverage ordinance. The action for the first one is for code of ordinances, Article 5, Section 3, 110, alcohol beverages, action for suspension or revocation of beverage license, number B 4893, Red Spot Inc., DBA Little Peach, and the owner and licensee.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, of course, we've had a couple of these hearings recently. These particular four items are based upon an operation conducted by the Sheriff's Department on 14 different locations in the county, including five, or including several in the city. There were five cases that were made against individuals in the city for sale of alcoholic beverages to an underage undercover officer, and the one has been, one of these racetrack was continued until the 14th because of some issues with the health of the licensee and unavailability of their attorney. So we're going to start on those, and we'll go through, as the council recall, would recall, the, what we're talking about is either placing a license on probation, suspending a license for a period, or revoking a license. As far as we know at this point in time, at least for these particular locations, these are the first cases that have been made. That does not necessarily mean that sales weren't taking place. It just means these were the first cases that were made as a result of this particular operation. Now, the first one that we've got, and I'll ask if he's here, Mr. Anquul Islam, who is, and if you want to come over here, if he, if you could let him, he's kind of sit. All right, and he's represented by Mr. Bob Fram. So if y'all want to come over here. And let me just state for the record that none of the licensees were actually the ones who made the sale. All right, these were employees of the licensee. So, Mr. Smith, you'll raise your right hand. So I swear the testimony about the given matter pending for the council will be the truth, though proven nothing but the truth, so have the God.
I do.
If you'll state your name for the council.
Brian Smith.
And by whom are you employed?
Calhwy County Sheriff's Office.
And how long have you been in?
At this sheriff's office, about seven, seven years.
And how long have you been in law enforcement?
26 years.
All right, and what are your duties at this time with the sheriff's department?
I'm a sergeant. I supervise the activities of the crime suppression unit. Basically, we deal with violation of laws involving vice or morals, such as prostitution, mainly narcotics, human trafficking and prostitution, and also alcohol and tobacco. The underage falls in our wheelhouse as well.
All right, and were you in that position in July of 2021?
Yes, sir.
And did you conduct an operation with an undercover officer under the age of 21 with an underage officer purchase alcoholic beverages from Red Spot, Little Peach, at 3185 East Highway 34 on July the 23rd, 2021, at 8:16 PM?
Yes, I did.
All right, and would you explain to the council how you knew on that date that the undercover officer was under 21?
I was utilizing a young man that works at the, at our jail. He's 20 years old. I use somebody who, he's not, while he's not a post-certified police officer, he has been approved by the police officer standards and training for, he is, he holds some type of certification in law enforcement. So I know he was 21 years old, about 20 years old at that time, because I have a copy of his driver's license, and I had looked at that prior to using him as an undercover officer.
All right, were you actually present when the sale was made on that day?
I was.
And did you witness the sale take place?
Indirectly. I was listening to the sale. I could not see the sale, but I recorded the sale, and I watched it before I made these charges.
All right, and so you had to have a recorded copy of the sale taking place?
I do.
And upon that, you reviewed the sale, and following that, issued a warrant for the arrest of the employee who made that sale?
Yes.
All right, and I'll just, real quick, show you this.
I do, he can have it.
All right, good. All right, and so, to your knowledge, did the employee ask to see the undercover officer's ID at this location?
He did ask to see the ID, and he was under 21. It states on the license, he's under 21. Instead of being sideways license like ours, it's up and down. It clearly indicates he's under 21.
In that case, in viewing the video, the sale was completed then?
It was.
And that, that's, that's all we have. And I ask Mr. Fram, if he's got any cross example.
Mr. Fram?
I appreciate that. We stipulate, stipulate to the officer's testimony, just like knocking at the appropriate time.
Sure. Any questions from council?
I have, I have a question. Although this being the first offense, correct?
Yes.
I would ask the officer, what prompts you to, what led to you going in there? Was there rumors of or anything like that going on prior to that you would just say were, or you just randomly go in these places?
Not specifically a complaint for any one place that I went to. However, over months, and, you know, say, the, the previous six months, we get complaints from parents. We get complaints from just folks that call in, one of them are anonymous, not specific to these folks, not specific to any one story you'll hear a name of in here today, but we have, we do generally get complaints, and we go out and just randomly try. And in this case, 53% of the places that we attempted to sell, buy alcohol from, sold it to us. So it's demonstrated itself to be quite a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question of Mr. Islam. Can you describe to us what your training procedure is with regard to a new employee?
Yeah, when we, I hire somebody.
If you wouldn't mind coming closer to the mic.
When I hire somebody, I tell them, I train them, do not sell any underage check. Each and everybody check ID, doesn't matter how old, just check the ID, make sure he is eligible to buy tobacco. Now, all are 21 years old, tobacco or beer and wine. So it is maybe, it is a mistake, I know that. The, the clerk who used to work for, who was that time, he had some problem, he had some surgery. He came from Duluth that day at 6:15 or 6:30. Then he started working, what I heard later on, I know he's sick. So maybe he did it by mistake, which is, I'm here in the same location last 14 years. This is, maybe they sting before too, I don't know, but it's never happened. Even though I got some appreciation later from city and county that they did the sting operation, and I passed it. So it is a mistake. I can't say anything.
Do you have a training manual that they actually read and sign?
No, I describe to them every time, and I put a sign on the, next to the register that they can see all the time, that do not sell beer, alcohol, or tobacco under 21 is years of, or elder.
I hope I get agreement from council on this. I'm going to ask you to develop a procedure manual, a policy manual, that your employees have to actually read in front of you and sign, and give it back to you?
No, I don't have that.
I, I'm asking you to do that.
Okay.
As part of what we're going to do here today.
I will do it.
And so that you've got a copy, and that they've got a copy of what they've signed, and what is expected of them with regard to sales of alcohol and tobacco to underage. Is this individual still one of your employees?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other question?
That was my question, exactly, about the manual.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Final question.
Mr. Sears?
Mr. Fram, may I want to speak?
Mr. Fram?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'll be very succinct, because you've covered a lot of this. Mr. Islam, the licensee owner, has operated this location for 14 years, has a, has had a license for 14 years. This is the first blemish on the record. We're not disputing what happened. We're hoping that it will serve as a teachable moment. Mr. Islam employs five employees at this location. We're happy to incorporate and develop a written training, and a written part of the personnel file, and would just ask the council to take in consideration that Mr. Islam has been a longstanding member in good standing with respect to his license, and would ask the, the council to consider probation and a fine. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sears, it's my understanding that the county has already, that the county, with regard to some of the other, not this gentleman, but with regard to some of the other violations, that they're, they issued a week suspension license and probation, or 12 months? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Of course, that doesn't apply to this gentleman. He's inside the city, but just wanted to give you that for reference.
I have one question for Mr. Sears. In the past, this has been some time since we've had something like this in the city. What did we do in that case where someone sold for underage? It was, I think it was 15 years ago?
Well, no, we've had, we've had more over time.
Okay.
But we, it has been a long time since we've had only one charge of selling, and I'm trying to remember if, if, I think it was Department of Revenue that came down and did, did several stings, and we had, had the Department of Revenue personnel here. So that has been a while ago. The other underage cases that we've had, there were numerous other violations that occurred too. So there were some, I mean, so it, it's been a while since we had a, this type of operation and a singular charge of the underage sale.
And if I'm not mistaken, in that case, we gave them probation because there was training there to say, this is what employees should not do, and.
That's right.
And, you know, you can't make somebody do the right thing, but you can train them to do the right thing.
Well, it, it, as I recall, that there were circumstances that, that some of the things, at that time, we did not have a fine process that was part of the ordinance.
That's right.
Some of the violations turned out to be a little more blatant than others was because it was kind of repeated.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those.
If you recall, that there were two or three, and they'd send one in, and if they were successful, they'd send another one in. And so some of those went all the way, like you say, for probation, to, I think one of them, that particular one, may have been at least two weeks, if not 30-day suspension.
I'm talking about the singular.
And I think, yeah, and it may have been just down the road as to where that.
I'm talking about the singular.
So, but I think you're right.
It seems to me that the one-year, 12-month probation is, is a given. It's up to the council as whether or not we want a fine in this situation, or a suspension of some length of time. I would suggest maybe not longer than a seven-day period.
I think that'd be appropriate, seven-day suspension, 12-month probation.
Well, and, and I would also ask that we put, that it's mandatory that you have some type of training program.
In, in the training program, I want the new employee to be trained, but I want the regular employee to be retrained at least once a year or something to that effect, when, and some evidence that they've held that meeting, and they sign off that they've held that meeting.
And I'll make that motion of one week.
And the 12 months?
12 months, yes, sir.
Okay, and the.
With the mandatory training.
Can we also suggest that there's some type of quarterly report that they issue regarding their employees as well as copies? Is that be, is that too much?
During the suspension period?
Yeah.
I would say that we need to be consistent across what we have done in the past.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Okay.
I said, I would, I would think that we would need to be consistent about what we've done in the past concerning others who have come to, who have had similar issues. And I mean, it's been a while, but when you decided to do probation for one, for a singular offense and not suspend their license, I think that that sets a precedence for us to consider to, to be consistent. We, we did not, in a singular case, suspend the license.
Counsel?
I remember one that we didn't, regards to the training, but I remember one that came to us that didn't have a manual, and I can't remember whether we actually suspended it. That's on two, I don't remember. We did. We suspended them.
Okay.
But that, that was, and they were required to sign a certification quarterly, then all the new employees would be retrained.
How long we do that during the probation period?
During the probation period, right.
That's right.
I might consider not doing a suspension, but maybe having a, posting a poster side sign in the front door saying that we sell to under, we've sold to underage minors, so it's known to anybody going in there.
I, I.
Your comment on this.
I mean, which minor?
Of course, let's, let's talk about it.
So, so we're, we're talking about the scarlet letter here?
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, I noticed the customers, the, and parents, that if their children go into that store.
Let me, let me just say that if you do, do a suspension, there is a scarlet letter because they have to chain the, the drink boxes together.
Anybody who goes in knows that?
Absolutely, with the suspension.
Anybody who goes in and sees that, although I do think that we did have one, one time that actually came from the police department and borrowed police tape and wrapped their titties to tape.
That, that was addressing Ms. Jenkins' concern about being standard.
Okay, so I do have a motion and second on the floor. I'm going to have to call that question.
Did we have a second? I thought there was a.
I'm sorry.
Was there a second?
I don't remember.
Anybody a second?
I only have the motion, Major.
Looks like a motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Could we repeat the motion?
The motion is for a week suspension and probation for 12 months, and for training to be provided, evidence of training to be provided to the city quarterly during the 12 months.
To be clear, that it's all on the business owner, not on the employee?
That's correct. Okay. Okay, so I'll call the question.
Second again.
Okay, any other discussion regarding this? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. The next item is also a hearing regarding the city of Newland Code of Ordinances, Article 5, Section 3, 110, alcohol beverages, action for suspension or revocation of business license, B 17, I mean, 7109, Newland Lakes Business, also DBA, as Newland Lakes Chevron. Mr. Sears?
All right, is Mr., if you'll come up.
Masani, Mr. Masani?
This is Pava Jada. Is that correct?
Which one are you doing, Brian?
No, I called the Newland Lakes. Mr. Masani.
Yep. Okay, okay, Newman Lakes. All right, this is Sanya Masani. Right, is that, okay. All right. Now, before we get started, all right, so you heard what transpired in the previous hearing. All right. Do you want to make any kind of comment? I'm represented by council in this particular case. I can go through with the case. So are you contesting it or not contesting?
I mean, leave, leave custody to the charge made by our employee, but I still have a few concerns and a few questions, if we can address.
Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to speed things up a little bit, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we understand that, but, I mean, we, we've got to go through the process.
Okay, so you have already previously been sworn in this case, and have given us your background. So did you conduct an operation with an undercover officer under the age of 21 with underage officer purchase alcoholic beverages from Newland Lakes Chevron at 8:02 B. 45 Road, July 23rd, 2021, at 7:45 PM?
Yes, I did.
All right, and is it your testimony to the council that you listened in on the purchase, and you had filmed the purchase, and you watched the recording of the purchase? In this particular instance, did the employee ask to see the underage officer's ID?
The cashier did ask for the ID. It clearly showed that Officer Hunt was under the age of 21, and they sold to him anyway.
And sold to him anyway. All right, let's.
Okay. For Mr. Masani, I have a question, same question you heard me ask before. Do you have a training manual, and is that presented to the employee for the employee to read and understand and sign by you, by him or her?
Yes, Mayor. We don't get it signed, but before we hire them, we have them undergo the training. We have a good system in the register where we can punch in the date of birth, which clearly allows and declines the sale if it's under 21.
So the employee clearly didn't punch in the date, the correct date of.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions from anyone?
I don't know.
Okay, counsel?
Just a quick question. Is this the first incident with this business?
Yes, counsel, ma'am.
And how long have you been in business?
We bought this store recently, back in January 2021, but I have been into the business since five years.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Well, I feel we ought to be consistent.
Yeah, as with the, this, yeah.
So I, I make a motion that we do the same as last, which was one week suspension of the license.
So even with training?
One year of probation, and then the mandatory training, and to prove that you've done training.
And reporting?
Okay.
Quarterly reporting?
Yes, sir, quarterly reports.
And so your training going forward would include your employee signing that, that training manual, and if they have a copy of it, you have a copy of it, so everybody understands exactly where they are?
Yes, Mayor, but in this case, we, it's a family-owned business. Yes, Mayor, but in this case, we, it, it's a family-owned business, and this employee, he was helping us for a month because my brother, he had to go out and help his uncle at the other location, so he was not in for a month. And this guy who we hired, he is a bartender at another, uh, another location in downtown. So he knows clearly what his job was, and we also underwent all the trainings before we hired him.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't form up that expectation.
Right.
Is he still with you?
No, sir.
Okay, smart. Okay, I had a motion of, did I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion is second.
I do have some discussion though.
All right.
In this situation, you even had protective measures in your cash register to where they had to put in the correct date to even sell. So they even went an extra step to try and prevent. So I'm, um, I, I think that this is not, um, that the consistency that I was asking for is the same consistency we gave to the last ones that came through, that didn't get a suspension, um, because they did the things that we expected them to do. Now, the only difference in this situation is they didn't get a signature, whereas that, that business did get a signature. And I think that the training, which is what we're looking for, actually did take place. So I think that, um, a suspension is inconsistent with the way that we have handled those who have properly trained their folks.
Here's the motion we have before us.
Could, could I have a que, could I ask a question of the store owner?
Sure.
How many other stores do you own, and have you had this problem previously?
I have, uh, four other locations, and I had a problem in one of the location in Lillburn where the employee sold alcohol to underage. And in that case, we had a store suspension for two days and a citation violation ticket we had to pay to the court.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion is second. Any other discussion? We'll call the question. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign?
Nay.
Hope motion carried. Thank you. Uh, thank you for being here today. The next item is also a hearing regarding City of Newnan Code of Ordinances, Article Five, Section Three dash one-ten, Alcohol Beverages, Action for Suspension or Revocation of Business License B Seventy-fourteen, MAA Investment Group, um, the BP Food Mart and Pava Jadi. Ms. Sears?
Uh, Your Honor, this is, um, uh, Your Honor, sorry, Mr. Bay, uh, this is, uh, Mr. Pava Jadi, is that correct? And it's BP Food Mart at one-on-one Grayson Trail, and I'll just ask the same question. So, and, and you've, you've heard the things that went on before, but, uh, so did, uh, you, uh, conduct, uh, an operation there with an underage, uh, undercover officer who was under the age of twenty-one on July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one at eleven fifty P M? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and did that undercover officer, was he able to make a purchase?
Yes.
And as you've testified previously, uh, did you listen in on that purchase and actually video that purchase?
Yes, I did.
And you reviewed the video, and did they ask at this location to see the driver's license?
No, they did not.
Did not, all right.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel?
Well, is this your first, first time?
Yes, sir.
Do you own other stores?
No, sir.
And how long have you owned this one?
About fifteen years.
Okay.
Do you have a training manual that you use?
I do, sir.
Does the, does the employee actually sign off on the training manual?
Yes, sir, they sign and date.
You or she have a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, have you got any explanation on what happened here regarding this individual? And is the individual still working for you?
No, sir, she's not.
Okay.
It was, uh, it was like late at night, they were getting ready to close, and they were in the process of doing their closing thing, which is not an excuse, but they were, it was like almost eleven fifty at night and they closed at midnight. And, uh, that was the situation and.
Okay.
It was.
Thank you. Counsel?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, of one week's suspension, twelve months probation, uh, documented training program and quarterly reports. Thank you, sir.
I would have to agree with Councilman, Councilperson Jenkins that that seems a bit extreme because he had, he does have a lot of things in play. He's got the manual, he's done some different things, so I'm not real sure if one year, whether as opposed to maybe like three months and probation, and, and I think a year is excessive in this case personally.
One year probation?
I think a year is excessive. I think three months perhaps less, but I know we're getting, yeah, but each one is in and of itself a different and unique case, so I understand being consistent, but at the same time, to me, this one falls, he's, he's got things in place that the, the others obviously and apparently didn't.
So you agree with the suspension?
I agree with the suspension, yes.
Of how long?
One week.
One week, but he, but he, he wants you to reduce your motion probation to, uh, three months?
Three months, yes.
I'm fine with that because, you know, if, if he comes back in six months and breaks it, then he's, you know, it's, so I'll do the three months.
All right, I have an amended.
Probation.
An amended motion of, uh, one week suspension, uh, three months probation and the, um, training with ninety day reporting. Ms. Sears?
Well, if it's three months, that'd be only one report.
Correct.
So, but we can get him to certify he's done it for that thirty day.
So I will add to the record for this case as well, is that in the past, when we've had the exact same thing, we did not suspend the license. We did give probation, I do believe, but we did not suspend the license. And that consistency is clearly across this situation where they had the training manual, they got it signed, and had a violation, and we did not suspend that license in that case. So.
Just, if, if there's, if there's, and, and I get, I get what you're saying about the consistency.
You did not.
However, however, if he's gone through all those measures, he's a, he has almost a higher level, a higher standard, because their employees know they were properly trained, so I don't have a problem with a week's suspension and another, a year of probation.
No, I'm saying no suspension at all, because that's what we did before.
But they're held, he did all, everything.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's why no suspension is because he held to the level that we, and, and I'm, and I'm doing this because we set a precedent back in that time about how we wanted to handle alcohol violations. We had a series of things happen during that time, and, I mean, I, I just, I'm having a real problem with us not being consistent. You know, this is.
So are you saying just the.
A probation.
A probation of one year and one week suspension should be, what's good for one is good for all?
I, I'm saying that if we're gonna treat everybody the same, we need to treat everybody the same.
Excuse me, what, what she's saying isn't previously, we did not sus, not suspend the license, we gave them probation without suspension.
Oh, I get.
Because they had a training program.
That was a little bit before my time, evidently.
They had a full training program and they retrained everybody.
And I understand Ms. Jenkins' argument for consistency, but this is a different council than was sitting there during those times.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just a totally different council, except for the two of us.
And it's only two people, so there's still five of us that made a decision then about how we would handle those things.
That decision is not binding on this council, and that's, you may, you're right about, about consistency and, and that type of thing. I understand that argument, uh, but this council has the right to move forward in a way that they, they want to move forward.
Okay.
And going forward, this may be the new consistency, that it's, it's, it's viewed now as a, as a higher level of responsibility. I mean, we're about to have package stores in the next six months. I mean, I think they need to understand that this is a serious situation for us.
Then I think that if we continue to create this as a requirement for the, the businesses, then they need to know that upfront and that be part of the requirements for that liquor license.
Let me just say, that is in the ordinance. It's a requirement in the ordinance.
To have it signed.
Well, not to sign, but it's a requirement in the ordinance.
That's the person everybody appears asking for them.
That when they, when they certify, they have trained those people and shown them the ordinance. Now, whether or not, you know, it, we get people to sign all kinds of stuff, you know, I acknowledge so-and-so, I acknowledge so-and-so, uh, when we hire them for employment. I'm assuming that most people, when they hire somebody, they sign something to the fact, I agree to abide by the rules and regulations of this company, all right, but, but this is, the, the point is, the burden is on them to show the people, and they certify when they sign the application that they have, they have, have gone over the ordinance with all of their employees. So it's, it's in there.
All of them have said they did it, but they just didn't sign something for it. That's my issue here, is that we don't require the signature and the thing, and that before, we had said we would, I, I want everybody in this city to be treated the same.
Well, what you.
That's my issue.
And, and, Ms. Sears, I'm gonna cut, I'm gonna cut the conversation short because we've heard it repeatedly now and don't necessarily need to hear it again, but it's your right to say, I have a motion and a second. The motion is for a one week suspension, the, and thirty day, um, yes, three months, I'm sorry, uh, probation with the one training reporting period during that time.
And a documented training.
That's right. Is there any other comment? I'm calling a question. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign?
Nay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda today is also a hearing of the City of Newnan Code of Ordinances, uh, section, Article Five, Section Three, Ten, One Ten, Alcohol Beverages, Action for Suspension or Revocation of Business License B Seventy-twenty-five, the BP Food Mart, um, Mr. Hanade Ali, the owner licensee, Ms. Sears?
Yes, this is. Mr. Haminda Ali, is that correct? All right, uh, or Ms. Ali. All right, uh, BP Food Market, um, at Market Square. And I'll just ask the question, did you, um, participate in an operation for an underage purchase of alcohol on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one at eight P M. at the BP Food Market, Mark, at Market Square?
Yes.
And again, uh, was the undercover officer under the age of twenty-one?
Yes, he was.
And, uh, did you listen in and record the purchase that was made?
Yes, I did.
At this particular location, did they ask to see the ID?
They did ask and looked at the ID, which clearly showed that the guy was under twenty-one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Do you have a training policy in place?
Yes, sir, we do.
Is it a written training policy?
Yes.
Does your employee sign that training policy when they do that?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, do you give them a copy of that training policy?
Yes, sir, she worked with us for five years.
Is this particular employee still in your employment?
Uh, she only worked for Sunday eight to twelve. That, there is no, she's only part-time. She just worked, working eight to twelve, that's it.
Okay, she was part-time, but does she still work for you? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, has she been retrained?
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel?
And the other thing we did, like, we put a new scanner now so we can check, scan the ID, so now we don't make any mistake, you know, the way we did last time.
Okay, good, thank you. Counsel?
Well, they had the signed documentation like the previous, so I make the motion of one week suspension, three months probation, documented training, and, uh, that would be one report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign?
Nay.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here. This is, the next item is a consideration of the joint resolution with Coweta County and the County Board of Education to waive property tax fee penalties for certain properties impacted by the tornado. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the joint resolution. Is presented any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign, motion carried. Under unfinished business, this is the first public hearing to inform the public of an update to the development impact fee ordinance. Mr. Cole, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council members. The agenda item is first public hearing to inform the public of an update to the development impact fee ordinance. The city recently completed a new comprehensive plan and consequently executed a more extensive update to the capital improvements element than is annually performed. Due to changes to the impact fee amounts, an update to the impact fee ordinance is necessitated. This ordinance establishes the rules that the city has established for all facets of its impact fee system. It also provides a fee schedule which must be compatible with the fee schedule contained in the capital improvements element. In your packets, the updated Appendix A, of course, is attached with this staff report and shows how the fee schedule has changed. The only change in the updated fee schedule is for single-family residences, and one example I included on the staff report there is the current amount we charge for a single-family home, or any kind of residence, I should say, is one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seven cents. Our proposed amount is one thousand one hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents, and that's a decrease of two point two percent from the current amount. So the factors that lead to this are a number of things, but just a few, our population and housing forecast through twenty forty-one, levels of service for fire, parks, and wreck, and roads, streets, and bridges, and also trips generated. Per the Georgia Impact Fee Rules, local governments must hold at least two public hearings prior to adopting an updated impact fee ordinance. This hearing will be the first for the document in question and will serve the purpose of informing the public of the intent to adopt the mentioned changes. The second public hearing will be held November twenty-third of this meeting. Thank you.
All right, any questions, Mr. Cole, today? This is a public hearing on this issue. This is your opportunity to come forward to speak to the issue of a public, of a, the attention of the city of Newnan to update their development impact fee ordinance. Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. I don't think we need to take any action today on this particular item. The next item is Twenty-One Berry Avenue owner update and request for extension. Mayor, how are you, sir?
Doing well, how are you, Mr. Mayor and Council? Uh, this property was last before you back this summer. Uh, the, the owner did request and, and received an extension, uh, to improve the property, uh, ninety day extension, which is set to expire. He has done some work to the property. He's improved, uh, he's done some painting, some siding repair. He's cleaned the, uh, trash, the, uh, weeds and overgrowth have been cut, and there is, there has been some improvements made. He is requesting another extension, and he did submit a written schedule of repairs, and Mr. Calderon is here today to, to address counsel about his plans for the property.
Okay, let me ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What is his request?
Uh, ninety days.
Does his schedule meet that request?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
Is, is it feasible?
I mean, it, it looks to me, but he did put a qualifier on here that, uh, depending on availability of materials, so, I mean, I guess that could be a potential issue, but it, it looks like it's possible.
Well, that's a real thing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, the ninety days?
Second.
Motion is second. We, uh, we approved the ninety day request for extension for the owner of Twenty-One Berry Avenue.
I have a quick.
We, we appreciate your efforts so far and, uh, and continue on. Thank you.
Thank you for.
Just a quick comment, if, if materials may be an issue, would it be prudent to just extend it to a hundred and twenty days, uh, just to give them that extra little bit of time, just in case, without having to come back to us?
I, I'd like to see, I'd like to make sure that I was continuing pressure.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second for ninety day request or extension. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like sign, motion carried. Thank you, thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
The next is consideration of a contract award for contract, uh, for Caldwell Taints demolition and remediation, uh, project.
Mayor Brady, members of the council, I'm here before you to give you a report and update on the, um, the work done by staff as well as our colleagues with Comprehensive Program Services as it's related to securing a firm that. Program Services as it's related to securing a firm to assist and lead with the demolition and abatement of facilities at fifty-seven East Broad Street, commonly referred to as Caldwell Tanks. As you can see in the agenda item and the memo attached, um, we received great interest. We went through some interviews and we are presenting, um, now with, you'll see, a recommendation from Comprehensive Program Services, a recommendation to engage, um, the firm Saber Demolition at an amount of...
Two million, or did I write that right?
Eighty-three thousand.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. Two million, eighty-three thousand dollars.
All right. Are there any questions, Mr. Craig? Is there a motion?
Make that motion for Saber?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request from, uh, the staff to hire Saber, uh, for the, uh, Caldwell Tank demolition and remediation. Any discussion? All those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carried. Thank you. The next is consideration of con, of contract award for the Link Phase C.
Yes, sir.
Are you still up?
Members of the council, I'm here to, to recommend, um, that we award a contract in the amount of one million, two-hundred-ninety-six thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents, um, to, what's it called? Hasbun Construction LLC at Alpharetta, Georgia. Um, this is for Link Phase C, which is the quote, "missing link," um, not intended, um, between the fire training facility and the current terminus point, um, near the intersection with Ashley Park Boulevard.
Right.
This is funded with lost twenty-nineteen dollars.
Is there a motion?
移到
Second.
Motion in the second to accept the staff recommendation on the, uh, Link Phase C construction project. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Uh, in discussing and talking with Hasbun, do you think they'll be able to do the, do the work and it'll all match up and?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, um, a member of Hasbun actually formerly worked for the well and construction, um, and has broken off and has created their own construction company. So there's a, there's a splitting of hairs, but we anticipate that, um, construction will be consistent with what we've seen to date.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, you kept by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, flipping the page, uh, the next item on the agenda, the request to close Madison Street has been withdrawn. The next request is for parking spaces, uh, on the square for November the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion?
移到
Second.
Motion is, is there a second? Motion is second. Any discussion on this? Any questions?
Everything's, everything's good on the date and everything? All right, great, thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carried. Okay, so now we are back into our amended agenda, which includes the public hearing continuation on the Popular Place annexation request on Popular Road. Uh, so you have that before you. We've had that, we've had that discussion going ongoing at one o'clock. We broke for this meeting about two-fifteen and we continue, uh, the public hearing for the annexation request, Popular, twenty-twenty L.A.C.
Would you like us to start with answering Councilman, Councilwoman Jenkins' questions where we left off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna let Mr. Shute do that.
She has the floor.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Shute, area of Georgia, working on the Berry-Tinoff Popular Place project. Councilman Jenkins, uh, it's nice to have a fellow architect doing something other than architecture. I went to a competing school, didn't go to Georgia Tech, so. Uh, with respect to, uh, your issues with respect, uh, concerning height, um, as a matter of point of reference, Piedmont Hospital is nine stories tall, one-hundred-and-sixty feet in height, seventeen feet, seven inches floor-to-floor. It's higher than, the space is higher than most office buildings, definitely most residential buildings because of the preponderance of mechanical equipment that hospitals have to have. They need all that room slab to slab in order to have proper headroom. Uh, I will tell you that our Phase One project, in the Phase One project, not a single building anywhere approaches that nine-story height nor one-hundred-and-sixty feet. We are, as you talked about, four or five stories. We are at the four or five stories for every building within Phase One. Uh, the townhome component was originally envisioned, as you know, to be a for rent, it's now a for-sale product. And the, some planned design around that was, in consideration, you're talking about creating a sense of place, four-story walk-up with the top roof deck, very similar to what you have at, uh, Noonan Lofts, I believe. Not necessarily the design, but in terms of layout. Uh, so that's the design. We are very much attuned and very much akin to having a place that relates to pedestrian scale, absolutely. Because without pedestrians, this project will fail. We need the interaction of the pedestrians and the stores and the shops, as well as the residential units in order to feel they're, they're welcome there and comfortable there. And as you know, as soon as you get a sidewalk with a tall vertical wall, people don't feel comfortable with that. Um, uh, it, let me switch real quickly to the landscaping plan. If you can go to landscaping plan, which is further.
Actually, if you go to Phase Two, because you said that was Phase One.
Okay, yeah, Phase One. Phase Two, we have placeholders right there for the square footage of office buildings. They can be as tall as eight stories, keeping within the nine store, underneath the nine-story Piedmont Hospital house. But office buildings have a tendency to be fifteen feet slab to slab, so eight stories of fifteen feet would be a hundred-and-twenty feet. Uh, again, we haven't designed Phase Two, we just have a placeholder in Phase Two for square footage, uh, based upon the, uh, square footage and based upon the number of jobs that could be created by the similar square footage.
And what about the decks?
Parking decks will be as high or if not, or lower than the office building. We do never, we never want a parking deck to be taller than a office building or even residential building because of the visual effect of a parking deck relative to what we're trying to create in terms of, uh, a built environment for, uh, the aesthetic for the residential or even for the office for that matter.
And I've got a question for our staff. How does that measure up to the other things that have been approved or that are existing in our city?
Ms. Stone?
In terms of height, we do have the I-eighty-five corridor, which will allow you up to eighty-five feet in height. Um, the CTC-A, please, you know what that one is?
They were right at that number. That, that particular building was, was created, was CTC-A, uh, created for that, for that purpose.
You said, so that's eighty-five?
Eighty-five feet.
That's correct. That's the maximum.
And all of this is over that?
If it's over the, um, eighty-five feet for the office buildings that he's referring to, he said the other would be four to five stories, which probably would fit in that. But the Phase Two being a hundred-and-twenty feet, you said, would exceed that?
Yeah, a hundred-and-twenty feet would be eight stories off a traditional office.
Thank you.
If I can have just a couple minutes to talk about the, you know, reassure everybody here about the pedestrian scale included here. Uh, as you can see from the, the picture there, the, uh, common areas between the residential and the, residential over retail and the office over retail creates a very human scale for pedestrian. Our intent is for the architecture at the lowest level to be, uh, for lack of better words, human scale. The de, design and detail of the elements, we've charged our architect with designing a place that people feel comfortable, because like, as, as you know, if people don't feel comfortable in place, we won't have them participating in the activities. We won't have them shopping, we won't have them eating and dining there. So it's too, in our best interest to design people-scale facilities. Uh, there is sidewalks everywhere. We have the link path passing through the project. We've talked to the link personnel on two different occasions. Uh, so we are encouraging this project as creations of a sense of place, as Hal had noted in his guiding principles for this project. And it means connection to the community, not just vehicular connection, but also pedestrian connection. We want to be able to combine and enjoin the neighborhoods around there so that you can enjoy the facilities. And by the way, when the link path is finished, your next Phase C, D, or E, and the link path is through this project, you could literally walk from Piedmont Hospital to Cancer Center and Treatments of America and never be on a city street. It's a two-and-a-quarter-mile walk or scooter, uh, no motorized vehicles allowed, uh, but, uh, two-and-a-quarter and never be on a city street, it provides a wonderful alternative means of transportation through the project.
Mr. Mayor, we'd had a, a couple of references to the fact that this is going to be clear-screamed and no trees, uh, and I'd read somewhere in our literature that there was a number of trees, uh, do you recall what that was?
Yeah, six-hundred-seventy-five trees are required pursuant to the city code. We have over eight-hundred trees planted. That does not include the four-acre lake and detention pond. Uh, it serves a functional purpose as well as an aesthetic purpose. Uh, Hasko, if you keep on flipping, we have, uh, two pages in this presentation for the, uh, landscaping plans. Uh, go through the design guidelines or after the design guidelines. There we go, landscape. And what do we have here? We have an error message. There we go. Okay, um, the first page, if you can go back one page? That's the error page, okay. Uh, anyway, if you can see from the type of trees and plantings here, this will not be a monochromatic, uh, design, not at all. We have, uh, the landscape architect has designed individual trees and, uh, landscape materials as well as hardscape materials that can be used and utilized in all the different areas of projects. So this is, residential will have a different feel, office will have a different feel, uh, the townhomes will have a different feel, the park around the lake will have a different feel. It's all about breaking everything down to small scale. It's a forty-two-acre site, which can be daunting in terms of, uh, the overall context, but if you break it down to the bite-sized components of the, all the uses on the site, I believe our landscape architect has more than enough responded to the question, in fact, exceeded the tree ordinance, uh, that's required by, uh, City of Noonan right now. And if I could take a few minutes, I'd like to introduce Craig, uh, to talk more about the design and the aesthetic of the multifamily.
I still have some more questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, and this is to city staff. Is outside of that corridor, what is our max height?
For like, commercial districts, it would be forty-five feet.
Thank you.
And then the, uh, I'm sorry, are you finished, Councilwoman Jenkins?
Uh, nope, but you can go ahead.
The, uh, corridor, I understand, is a max of eighty-five feet, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Jenkins?
Um, let's see. One of the, uh, things that I have been thinking about and that I, I would like you to, to give us some information on is the office space trend. I mean, we just went to, um, the Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia Conference that we always go to, and the president of the Georgia Chamber actually told us that they're trending away from, um, a lot of office spaces because employees are, are really requiring and demanding that they have, um, the ability to work from home, um, and, or from remote work, that kind of thing. So I'm trying to see what your studies have said will be the demand for office space in the future, because, you know, one of the things that we all experienced in the, you know, nineties and early two thousands was strip malls that popped up and now they're vacant. And we're trying to figure out how to repurpose them. So are we, I want to make sure that this is something that has been researched so that we don't have office spaces that we then won't know what to do with, um, years down the road.
I will ask Hal Berry to join me as well, too. He's the office expert. Uh, well, with respect to the studies you're seeing, yes, I've been to conferences with that same type of material as well. Uh, but also what they're finding out is that if you're not in an office environment, the lack of promotion is not there. You have to be seen by your peers, you have to be with your peers, you have to work with your peers. Zoom calls, Microsoft team calls are not, at this present time, are not a replacement for actually being in a setting where you're actually working with your employees. Uh, spontaneity is a key component to corporate culture. If you don't have somebody down the hall, that an idea pops in your head, you can't discuss it with them. It's very hard to schedule a spontaneity-type call. Uh, so I will hold, I'll let Hal speak to the office component, but about office, yeah, your immediate, you're absolutely right, the immediate, uh, focus on office is downsizing of office space, but let's see what happens in the long term.
Well, we're dealing with a lot of change in the, in the office market, especially, uh, brought on by COVID. And, uh, uh, you know, for a long time, everybody was going to very small offices to, to get efficiencies and less cost per, per, per employee. And all of a sudden with COVID, now the space requirements have changed. In fact, most office buildings have, have a lot of, uh, uh, communication space, uh, conference rooms and a different type of facilities. There's a, there's a, if you read all of the, all of the office magazine, trade magazines, you'll see that there's, there's, uh, a lot of discussion about where the, where the future's going to go. Meanwhile, we do know that in the, in the tech world, especially those, those that are locating at, uh, at Georgia Tech and other similar, uh, institutions, that, uh, the offices are, are, are there to stay and they're taking major, major, uh, commitments of office space. On the other hand, there is a, another, another movement, and that is to, to relocate a lot of their facilities out of CBDs, out of the center cities, and to the suburbs. And that's where I feel that we have a real opportunity to, we don't need to pick off for what we're trying to do for Noonan, Georgia. We don't need to pick off, uh, a big portion of the, uh, office absorption, which should be in that three to four million square feet. We don't need much of that, uh, in, in a year's time to do what we're trying to do here. And I think that we, we will get, uh, uh, Remington has, uh, moved, uh, headquarters to, to LaGrange, uh, you know, from New York City. That's a, a, and, and really, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, you all should, uh, spend time with, uh, Trey, who has, has, uh, got a background in economic development and, uh, of course, now heads, uh, your, your Development Authority. But, uh, he, he is, is well-versed and, and as we're going to go about this, we're going to use Trey as well as state economic, Georgia power economic development people, uh, as well to access those users and, and find out, uh, what we can do. Can I guarantee that, uh, we're going to be chock-a-block immediately? No. But I can feel this is worth trying to do now to try to be prepared, prepared to do it.
Can I have a question, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, you brought up Trey Westmore, and of course, he is the executive director of the Coweta County Development Authority. And earlier today, we were talking about this tax abatement and, and the, uh, the Development Authority. Have you actually had a conversation with Trey regarding that and what was his reaction?
About the which?
Approving the, the, the bond issues.
Well, uh, we've had, uh, we're working through the process. Though we do not have a commemorative from him, we're working through a, the first step to us is an inducement letter to start the, 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 uh, the wheels in motion. And, uh, uh, and, and from the inducement le, letter comes, uh, the next, uh... Memorandum of Understanding. So we're, we're working toward that.
I have a, I have a question.
All right, Ms. Jenkins has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have one more question.
All right.
Um, uh, the parking decks. They are the most prominent thing that you'll see coming down the interstate, according to this plan, as you're approaching Exit Forty-four. And the first thing I thought of was going at four-hundred, getting off at Phipps, and you see the large, uh, you know, parking decks that make up that shopping center over there that I spent a lot of time in when I was in college. And then you see all of the things over, and, and it, it, it is quintessential Buckhead, Atlanta. And that's, that gave me the feeling that I, I'm not looking for that in Noonan. And that's, that gave me the feeling that I, I'm not looking for that in Newnan. So I'm trying to figure out how you all are, are planning to deal with that because that visual is not what I, I want people driving, hitting, you know, exit 44, which is the closest interstate to downtown Newnan, exit to downtown Newnan to experience.
The, the plans for those parking decks that face the highway there are to screen the sides with architectural features. Whether it's a screening, whether it's a green wall, whether it's special precast elements there on the sidewall, hasn't been designed yet. Here are your concern, it's a concern we've raised to the architects and it's an issue that we will address, you know, as, as, as we design, as we develop the project. It will not be left, I agree with you, having that as the first thing you see coming down the highway, it's not a good entrance to our project either. And by the way, the Phipps project, thank you for shopping there. 1991, 1992.
Yeah, that's a concern.
I agree.
And I think that a better face to the entrance of Newnan, especially after we put all of this money into putting a sign up that says Newnan across the interstate, I don't want you to enter the exit after that sign and it be a big old parking deck.
I would agree, we, we, we understand that's an issue that has to be designed, we haven't designed it yet, but we, you know, we understand the need and necessity for screening that wall, because the last thing we want to do is have a stark wall, as you call, you know, as you talk about it, with respect to the wall. And you're right about Fifth Plaza and the decks there, there was supposed to be, supposed to be, two other buildings on the site that would have shielded them in its entirety. Subsequent owners dropped the plans, never done.
Right, and, and that's the kind of stuff we want to present.
Understand, we, we, you know, we don't have room for subsequent buildings, we have room to screen the decks.
I'm done.
Thank you, I have a question regarding the rental and the retail spaces that you're proposing and office spaces in the phase one. At what percentage of occupancy do you decide to kick off phase two? If you never, that's what would be my question, what's, what's the percentage of occupancy? Because your, your, this whole program or the whole project is based upon itself sustaining itself in the retail and the rental and now the townhouses being fee simple ownership.
So I think you're talking about the, the Main Street retail, which is, is really in the, somewhere in the range of 55,000 feet of, of retail space, and I think you're talking about the 22,000 feet of office space above that.
Correct.
We would hope to have that substantially leased that far after completion. That is not a lot of space. And, and with the, the partner we're working with on that, we should be able to get that done. The, the other office building that we're going to attempt to do, as I mentioned earlier, to start at totally spec, don't think so. But to, to, if we get the right financial partner, the right structure, we might. But if we can get a pre-leased candidate that we can work with, we'll start it in that 50% range.
50% rate, does that apply to the rental units as well and your townhouses? That 50% rate capacity?
No, the 50, the, the townhomes will be, be all, no, no more, no more rentals, all sales. But that will, will, will just give it to the, the developer partner, townhome developer partner, to make that decision, how he's going to phase the, those, the, I do know that.
Mr. Berry, in, in your other projects, I must, sorry for interrupting, but while you brought up the, the townhouses, do you have other projects that you've done? I mean, I went online and, and looked at your, your beautiful creations and, and projects you've done. Do you have other projects that have this type of rental and now the introduction of fee simple ownership?
You know, my background has been primarily office and some hotel and never really got into the, the, but, and that's why I've got both Jimmy and, and John on board. And we brought in the right guys to, to handle the, the rental apartments, both the, the over 55 and the market-driven apartments, Graystar, but.
So if you don't mind me asking, who, who is that partner who will do the multifamily and the active adult? Could you speak, would you mind?
Oh, no, no.
Not at all. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Yeah, any questions related to the 350 conventional multifamily units and the 150 active adult units will be a partnership with the Berrys and Graystar. Again, Graystar is headquartered out of Charleston, we're the nation's largest owner operator, so we not only manage over 500,000 units across the country, but also build and invest in those units. So the objective here, Councilman, would be to, at the very, you know, commencement of the project, construct all 350 of the conventional units and 150 active adult units.
Great, so to your, back to that again, the percentage of occupancy that you have to have in order for you to kick into phase two, or is phase two, for lack of a better way to express it, something that may be or may not happen based upon your occupancy? Because this, again, is a self-sustaining community.
Sure.
And then have, and just let me piggyback one, on the fee simple ownership, do you have found, as been in your experience, when you combine fee simple ownership within a, a scope of a project this size, you've had, what would be your experience as promoting the sale of a, of ownership that is directly affected to how the rise and the fall of this particular project, so to speak?
Certainly, I'll, I'll let John speak on behalf of kind of the phasing, but certainly from our experience of Graystar, you know, really the comprehensive uses, the mixed-use nature of this project, kind of bringing all of those synergies and symbiotic uses together at once, the office, the retail, the residential, they're all kind of feeding off each other and supporting each other economically as it, you know, as this project kind of supports the vision here.
If you don't mind, another question?
No, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Berry.
Go over again the, the, the size of the units and the rent roll and, and also the, the phase two has no residential in it. The phase two is, is all commercial, office space, is that correct? Yeah, okay.
So the residential from the conventional side, again, those 350 units, on average, they'll be in the 900s, so we'll have one bedrooms, two bedrooms and a small offering of three bedrooms. And then the active adult units will be slightly larger. We're seeing across the country and, and our company has been very active in this space, has built over 50, 55 age restricted and up communities. Most of them have been in the, the Sunbelt, the, the East Coast. And those units are in the kind of thousands on average range. And again, there will be restricted from just one bedrooms and two bedrooms on that front. And, and those oftentimes are kind of in that 150, 160 units overall.
And how many of those are in active areas like this as opposed to standalone, away from?
I would say, I would say, I mean, here's a great, thank you for pulling this up, a map of, of what kind of our local Graystar Atlanta experience has been. Here we have five projects locally, one recently completed in downtown Duluth, another near the ballpark in the Cumberland market. We have one up in Forsyth County at the Halcyon mixed-use project. The next slide does show an overview of what that project looks like in Forsyth County at Halcyon. In the back there is really the backdrop to this mixed-use community, there was 300 conventional units, a structured parking deck and an active adult project. Those, all of those units are completely leased within 12 months of them completing, so incredibly successful and really excited to see the progress of, of that project. But there have been others that have been kind of standalone and then certainly ones that are involved in, in mixed-use type projects like this.
And this particular one is senior housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you tell me the rent, rent roll range in Halcyon?
Sure. So in Halcyon, the 300 conventional units on average are over $2,000 a month. And for the active adult product, on average, they're almost $2,400 a month.
So what drives you down to $900 a month in Newnan?
There's just market studies and market demands right now that we're looking at, you know, collectively, and it ultimately is just the economics of, that drive, you know, what market rent is.
I would have thought the price of the land out there and the development cost added to the acquisition cost would have driven your price higher than that.
We're, we're certainly hoping that it, it goes up.
Yeah, could you just, for, just for, just for the record, could, I know you went over the price points of the, at the previous meeting, could you hit those again for the different sized apartments you're proposing?
I don't have them in front of me, Councilman, and we're happy to kind of follow up with that additional information right in front of you. But again, I mean, all of this is, is market-driven, we're actively studying the surrounding apartment communities in the area and targeting that market level rent. And certainly expect, you know, a community like this to, to command a premium when it has the walkability and surrounding uses next to it.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I have a question, a couple of questions. With the proposed, all the parking decks, how many parking spaces total are you looking at building?
Let's qualify that question, in phase one or?
Well, let's do phase one and phase two, we'll split it up, either one.
Sure.
Okay, phase one multifamily parking deck is approximately 550 spaces. The office building for phase one is an, is a parking deck that would be shared by the hotel and the 100,000 square foot office building because of their time demands. That deck is 400 cars. So now we're up to 1,000 cars parking deck. Office buildings, 11 and 12 here on the map are the two last office buildings, that's the phase two. Depending upon the square footage that we end up with, if we do end up with the 525,000 square feet of space as indicated by this plan, that would be approximately 2,000 cars in that deck. So all total, you're looking at approximately a, a number approaching 3,500 to 4,000 parking spaces, deck spaces.
Okay. When he was up showing the hardscapes and stuff like that, I saw he had like a wood screening fence and stuff like that, who's going to maintain long-term ownership and maintenance on all this, like the property management to make sure that things aren't degraded and looking poor?
Berry Companies would retain ownership, I do not know the final structure on, on that.
So the intention is for Berry to continue to hold it long-term?
Yes, yeah, somebody's got to manage everything, okay? And somebody's got to be there, involved with everything, even though you might have a separate owner for multifamily, a separate owner, well, you'll fee simple ownership for the townhomes. But also to answer your question about phase one versus phase two, the west half of the retail is retail under multifamily or multifamily over retail, whichever way you want to put it, that has to be built all at the same time, just because of the nature of construction. The eastern half, you can't build a left half of retail without the right half of retail, otherwise you have a relationship and a, and a synergy that won't work between both components of retail. So that will also be built at the same time. It's the intention for phase one, when townhomes were part of the rental, to be, do everything at phase one with the exception of the 100,000 square foot office building initially, at the same time for the sake of economy and the sake of scale. Hal's already answered the question about the phase one office building, the 100,000 square foot office building. And with the synergy and requests that we're getting for the project right now, phase one office building, depending financing, would be, the 100,000 square foot building will be built at the same time, could be built at the same time.
Okay. You're, you're stirring up a whole lot of feelings of synergy here. With all that synergy going on, I'm concerned that that synergy is going to create, in the self-contained unit, it's going to take away from our downtown, somebody addressed that earlier, from our downtown area, the potential redevelopment of our Caldwell Tank Site in Ashley Park. And I know that's not, have you considered that? Especially, we've already approved and still awaiting more apartments and more commercial in Ashley Park even. There was supposed to be a couple more commercial spaces built there.
Yeah, Ashley Park, you approved a residential component to complete one of the blocks from the end of Ashley Park to the Belk Store. You also approved a couple of large format retailers on the other side of the street. That project has not, neither project has started forward, okay? So I don't, I don't know the status of them at all. With respect to downtown, this project taken away from downtown, I would like to call your attention to Alpharetta. Everybody thought the same thing of Avalon. Downtown Alpharetta is thriving even more so with Avalon there, it's just brought many more people there. City of Marietta built a food hall and the, the concern about building their food hall, granted, this is a little bit bigger than a food hall, the concern about the food hall was it would take away from the adjacent restaurants around the square. What it's done is brought more people to the restaurants and more people to the food hall because it became a destination unto itself. We never intended for our retail to compete with Ashley Park. Ashley Park has a number of your traditional national retailers, mostly in the soft goods sector, your, your lofts, your Victoria Secrets bathroom body, et cetera. We, we are not trying to compete there. We have 75,000 square feet of retail planned, half of it, at least half of it will be in the food and beverage program. Will that compete with downtown Newnan? No, we're finding people in downtown Newnan want to have a location here as well. So it's like, it just opens the opportunity for another food and beverage location. We do not think it will jeopardize downtown Newnan. Downtown Newnan is a completely different market, same customer, but completely different market, completely different feel, completely different design approach to what downtown Newnan is.
Okay, and to go off, to, to continue on with that is, my concern is if it's going to have 75,000 square feet of retail, you know, beverage, restaurant, that kind of space, the ability for those folks to afford those apartments is going to be an issue. So now are we going to be creating more traffic, people commuting in to work at the restaurants, people living at the apartments commuting up to Atlanta or elsewhere and, and having a, in and outflow where it's not truly a self-contained synergistic community?
Well, right now, you've read the statistics, 70% of the people living in Coeida County are traveling out of the county to work. Also, by creating a location where they could work and could live, you would relieve the, you relieve a certain amount of traffic issues on the roadway right now, because 70,000 people, not 70,000, 70% of Coeida Countyans are traveling out, adding more traffic to the road infrastructure right now.
Yep.
Can I, go ahead. I want, I want to piggyback on not the traffic as much as jobs and creation, et cetera.
So I have two, two more questions, one more question for you specifically is, looking at the link, and that's the red dash line on the map behind you, it crosses over a couple of arteries, one minor at this point, one major, Poplar, Poplar Road. And Poplar has been kind of a concern in many areas, many regards regarding transportation. Getting the link over, under, or right on Poplar is going to be a, a serious traffic concern and even snarl traffic even more if it actually goes on or crossed Poplar Road. Would you all be willing to potentially build a tunnel under Poplar to get connected as part of your development? Because otherwise it's going to be stopping traffic to get those pedestrians across Poplar.
It's the same scenario that's created that we have coming over from the, the cancer treatment center over into, to downtown where they cross four lanes on the link, so it's similar.
How'd they handle it, well, that would be a consideration. We've, we've talked to the hospital beforehand, we've talked to Link beforehand, they understand that crossing Poplar Road, because the hospital has a loop link, pardon the pun there, through their project, which will loop around, literally they're arced from one traffic light to the other traffic light. They don't know how it's going to be handled at either intersection right now, so we've been in conversation with them. Tunneling under such a large road like that, utilities issues, fear, dark, you know, all that, is it a tunnel? I don't know, is it a bridge? We don't know. If the infrastructure bonds, if we're successful, the infrastructure bonds, absolutely.
Because right now, most of our tunnels are, you know, box culvers that we just put under roads.
Right, this is, this is too big for a box culver.
Again, based on the size and scope of this one, it's going to be a much larger project.
Right.
And that's my concern is how are we going to get pedestrians safely across Poplar at a major interstate intersection?
It's, you raise a valid point that we have to, we have, we definitely have to adjust.
Okay, one, this is one last question, and this is from Mr. Ha, Mr. Berry's opening statement. He said that the, that there were certain promises given from the governor. What were those promises?
I apologize, it sounded like I may be overreached, I didn't. I, I met him at a fundraiser here and, and spoke to him, told him what I was doing, and he says, oh my heavens, he says, that's really fantastic. And he says, I says, we're going to be talking to your economic developers. And he says, well, here's my card, call me, I'd be delighted to help you. That's just it.
Okay, so it was just a conversation, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone?
I wanted to, I'll jump in since nobody's, you had mentioned in your presentation that I was fortunate to sit in on and, and it was a great presentation, by the way, but you reference jobs being created under economic impact Poplar Place and then you talk, you talk about the 30-year abatement and then you move on down to jobs. Jobs created, you're speculating 2,600, permanent jobs of 3,620, total of 6,224 total jobs being created by this specific project. And part of the jobs, I'm, I'm trying to understand, I understand the construction-related jobs, but the permanent jobs, where are they going to come from? And I think somebody mentioned earlier, my, one of my concerns is, can, and I, I think Mayor Brady might have brought this up, was can the, can those jobs that are being created that are permanent of 3,600, or yeah, 620? I'm sorry, these are not my glasses, these are my, Mr. Cricko's glasses. But anyway, that being said, can they actually afford to live in that? But anyway, that being said, can they actually afford to live in that community themselves? Or are they going to have to go somewhere else? That's, you state it so, and you, as if it's a matter of fact, so what type of paying jobs are you talking about?
Okay, it was 3,670, so the seven looks like a two by your glasses. Anyway.
Yeah, well, it's, on this one, I can't actually read it, but anyway, that being said, I'm not going to just be 50.
4,000 construction jobs during the two and a half years the project's under construction. We know those jobs are temporary, they come and go. Okay? But you still get the employment tax off while they're working there. 3,670 full-time jobs, of the 3,670 full-time jobs, approximately 3,000 of them would be related to office workers. The balance would be in the food and beverage management positions within the multifamily management positions to manage the project. You ask who's going to repair the fences, you know, staff needs to be on hand. Can they afford to live there? Office workers, absolutely. The office workers, if it's a medical office building, your average salary, according to Georgia Labor and Bureau Statistics, is $75,000 a year for a medical office person. That includes technicians, that includes the doctors. You're talking if an office worker, if it is a, I don't mean to throw out names at all, but if it is a tech company, for instance, if it is Remington in the global headquarters, you're talking people with six-figure incomes, at least six-figure incomes. Could they afford to live there? Absolutely. Who's living in the, I'll ask you this question, who's living in the Noonan Loft Townhomes project right now? I mean, those projects started off in the mid-fives, and they're in the upper sixes now, and one I just saw listed for 705. So the prices of those are truly way up there. So if you do simple math on that, a person that wants to afford a $700,000 townhome has to be making at least $175,000 a year. You know, is that an office worker we want here? Absolutely. So as Craig noted, they're doing the market study, their survey, in terms of the price points for the multifamily. They will adjust the multifamily in order to ensure their occupancy.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Just a follow-up to the first meeting. I know, this last one. Let's discuss the watershed, and I know we've talked about that, the long-term and short-term effects for everything in that watershed.
This was a question that did come up before, and we're very familiar with the Stillwood watershed. We designed, permitted, and were part of the construction of the promenade at Noonan Crossings, which was in the Stillwood watershed. So we understand the requirements the city has for developing in the Stillwood watershed. We would absolutely adhere to the same requirements for developing the Stillwood watershed. So that's extensive modeling, water quality, the potential for runoff reduction, that would absolutely be adhered to.
I know you're saying adhering to, to the ordinance, and that's fine. My concern, though, is the actual, you know, there's one thing modeling, another thing the actual runoffs and long-term, you know, with such a large retention pond, it's still draining, you know, still a lot of hard surface.
Sure, absolutely. We'd have to show the water quality treatment is effective.
Exactly. My concern is for those folks downstream, for them not getting flooded.
Understood, and that was really why the city adopted the Stillwood watershed, was because of the flooding issue. And we would absolutely have to show that during the 100-year storm, there was absolutely no rise in the 100-year flood stages.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time on the annexation request for Annexation 2021-01 by Poplar 2020 LLC for the 42.20 acres on Poplar Road, and ask for a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that we accept the annexation.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the annexation. Any discussion?
I do. I'm, in its current form, as it is, I'm not going to be able to support this project. I think that there are some concerns here about the height, the traffic, and many other things. And I think that voting on it today and not giving them a chance to go back and make some revisions that they have said they are willing to do, may, for me, it would cause me to have to vote against it. I would like to see, because I think that the problem here is that, it's not that I don't want to see anything happen here, and I don't think anybody wants to see something stop here, but I do not think that in its current form, it is something that I can support. I think that having them go back and take all of our concerns into consideration and come back to us with something different would be something that could keep this ball rolling down, you know, keep this ball going, so that we can eventually get to something that might be more acceptable to us and our community. So that's...
May I say something, Mayor, as well?
Yeah, sure. This is discussion?
I think what Ms. Jenkins referred to earlier, we have to look at what we really want Noonan to look like going forward. And are we losing the fabric, the characteristic of our community? And I always find it interesting, those who come from Marietta and Alpharetta want to bring down that look, that style to Noonan, and I'm not real sure if that's exactly what we're looking for. Also, in relationship to, you know, scaling down and all these other things, there's some other things, underlying things, such as the abatement, the school district, the Coeida County School, you talk about the Coeida County Commission, and you talk about us, there's nothing that you have that's firm, that's written, that says that that's going to happen. And you have to have that, otherwise, we're just signing off and we don't know who's, what's going to happen there. I think, to me, we want to see growth, and we have to have responsible growth, and we also need to take a hard look at what that looks like. We also, yes, it checks all eight boxes, yes, it's a wow factor, yes, it has all many positive features, but does the positive outweigh the cost it's going to be to the community? That's the key to me. And is it the prudent thing to do? That's the key. Is it prudent to approve this project? That's, and I'll end with that word.
And I have got to say that I agree with both Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Geon. This does not look like Noonan looks, and I think it can. And I think we saw the same thing with Caldwell Tanks right down the street, when developer after developer came in and tried to force something there that didn't look like Noonan looks. And consequently, we purchased that property, don't get me wrong, I am not suggesting that we're going to do that here. We are not going to do that here. But we did force that property into something that was acceptable to our community by our actions, and it didn't, there it took buying it, here I don't think it does. I am overly concerned with the fact that the tax abatement is the driving revenue source for the infrastructure, not only the horizontal infrastructure, but some of the vertical infrastructure maybe. I am overly concerned that there is not a lease-up on the 100,000 square feet of office space. I don't know that I completely agree with the whole COVID issue. I think there's a lot to be said about being in an office and the synergy in an office, but 100,000 square feet of absorption in this market is kind of unheard of. And I think the Development Authority has some, would have some help there until the first medical office went in there. And then I think they're not in there anymore, because I don't think just regular office space and medical office space mixes. That's why you see the MOBs that are being built in and around Piedmont Hospital, you don't have an attorney or a tax accountant or those people in those offices. They're MOBs, and they're that for a reason. So, and I also have a real concern about phase two ever happening, because it gets to the point where phase one doesn't happen, and phase two, of course, obviously doesn't happen at that point. My overriding concern, saying all those things, is if we take this action today, we have, if we approve this action today, we have set in motion for that property, the way it sits, a project that it's just in my mind, not feasible. I mean, it just doesn't fit the community. So I can't support, I can neither support the motion as it stands. Now, having said all that, I'm sure there's an opportunity here for the city to be able to be involved in what the property owners want to see eventually on this property. I mean, they want to get the highest price they can for their land. I understand that. I totally get that. They should. But there is a price that drives the development. When you add the acquisition costs and the development costs together, that's what's driving, make no doubt about it, that's what's driving the multifamily on this property, the hotel piece on this property. The outparcels on the front, there are three of them, even though they're dedicated, that they can't be a C-store, those three outparcels are sold next week for close to a million dollars a piece, or maybe more. But that doesn't help the rest of the development, because that $3 million of the $34 or $35 million horizontal infrastructure cost doesn't begin to pay for it when you add, when you also add the acquisition cost on top of it. So I've got some major concerns about us taking this action, I'm going to repeat myself here, and then it languishing, and the property owner is not only annexed, but there's, the next step after annexing the property, maybe all of you out there understand this, but is to actually adopt the ordinance that creates the requirement for this project, our MXD ordinance classification requires that a project be on the inside of that ordinance, inside of that rezoning request when it's presented. So we would not only be approving the annexation, the next step is to approve the rezoning itself. So I've got some major concerns. Who else have their, Mr. Alton?
Yes, sir. My big concern is, are we truly following the comprehensive plan? And we just passed that. I don't think we are. I'm repeating what everyone has been saying, vastness, height, lack of homeownership. My big concern was the financing when I was asking the questions, and it turns out the abatement has to go to the school board, county, and the city. We haven't even approved that. So if we approve this project, and of course, phase two, I don't believe phase two will go through. I question how many, how much of that office space will be utilized? And as the mayor said, we can approve this, and now what? And if it doesn't go through, we've annexed this land into the city, so.
Well, I can say one thing, it's got some negatives, it's got some positives. My concern is if we don't annex it, what's it going to look like? It's going to be in the character, we have zero input on how it looks. And at all the intersections of all the interstate, convenience stores, gas stations, fast food, that's all you get. So we could wind up with a nice little park of fast foods and convenience stores, and that's why I think this project's actually better than that. Again, it's not perfect, it's not everything I've known in something, but sometimes you have to agree to take certain parts of it just with the rest of it.
And actually, that's something, the reason why I even started the comment, was to kind of slow this process down, so that we wouldn't deny it. So that we wouldn't deny it outright in its current form, but to give them an opportunity to come back to us with something that is better than what you're talking about.
It's unusual for me, once I have a motion on the floor, to allow a voice from outside our discussion, but I'm going to do that in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would love the opportunity to take the comments we've heard today and try to do some work before we come back. Therefore, I checked with Mr. Phillips. Your next meeting is in two weeks. I think we need a little more time than that, because I think that we need to take these changes, vet it back to staff before we come back to you. So what we were wondering is if you were entertaining the idea of possibly tabling it, if it could be tabled to your December 14th meeting, that would give us time to make some edits within the next week or two, get it to staff, so they have time to look at it. We can go back and forth and then get it back to you all before the December 14th meeting, if possible. I just don't think the two weeks is enough time turnaround to do that. So we would love the opportunity to take what we've heard today from you all, from the citizens, from staff comments, and see if we can't make some tweaks and changes, and bring something before you taking all of that into account. But again, I think we need more than the two weeks, if you would honor that request.
I'm even open to having a little bit more time than that, because some of the things that, you know, we talked about, you know, this will give us some opportunities to also add some questions to that, because for instance, y'all brought up Remington moving to LaGrange, and I'm not familiar with that project and what the parameters are there. And I'd like a little time to look into it, to see what made them go there, what that development looks like, because the driving force from this, according to y'all, is to get that Class A office space that we've been talking about for decades. I think that some of the stuff we're talking about, though, are the details of not just office, but all the other stuff that has come with this project that isn't Class A. So I'm looking at how the Remington, I mean, are they in this big development? Are they a single standing office space? Those kind of things. So there's a little bit more to it than that, because I think that it's more important to get it right than to be fast.
And for the citizens who are out there, and I'm sure there's some people watching us, but there are also people who are here, this is not unlike the process that we went through with Caldwell Tanks. Those folks, especially the last suitor, came in on several occasions. We erred on the side of taking more time, if that's an error, and I don't think it is. But we moved forward at a very deliberate pace that we thought was fair to the applicant and fair to our citizens, so that, and rest assured, when this comes back, it'll come back, not as just an agenda item, but it'll also come back as another public hearing opportunity. If they're going to make substantial changes, then the public will have an opportunity once again to comment on what's before them. So I understand Mr. Schell's comment, that if we don't do this, what winds up in the county in that location? And honestly, I'd rather the city have control of that spot than the county, because I think...
Can I make a comment as well? I don't want us to get into the fear, yes, this project could be scaled down, which I would be curious to see how far you could get scaled down. With Caldwell Tanks, when we asked him to scale it down, it was like 15, oh, knock off 15 units. I'm not real sure where you can go to make a project like this affordable or profitable would be the word. And then more importantly, I think we don't, I don't want to get, for us to get into a place where, gee, if this is the only thing, the only game in town is this particular moment, so we move out of a fear of a loss of something, or of the possibility of something coming in. I think oftentimes, it can be the backup that comes in, and as to your point, Mayor, when you said regarding, we have, we could have, if this project doesn't go, gets voted down, then we have more of a language and a more, of an opportunity to sit with economic development from Coeida County, and which, there really isn't much conversation, quite frankly, if we want to get down to it, between city and county when it comes to these types of adventures. So I think we have an opportunity for conversation, I think we have. I'd be really curious to see what you all can come up with, but I don't want to be forced to move in from fear as to what may or may not take place.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, just...
What about January? Can we carry it out to January for them to get their work done?
And I would like to, I know there was a lot of, I think we all received a lot of communication from our residents here, that many weren't able to make, because it is during working hours. I know y'all are working here during working hours, to possibly make it one of the evening meetings.
That would have to be the January evening.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, our current contract, we're not sure that we will be able to extend out if we come back in January. So if we could possibly shoot for December 14th, we could work on, that's an evening meeting. Yes, sir, that's the only one you have, and I double-checked with Mr. Phillips, that is an evening meeting. If we could possibly shoot for that day, and we can work on our, you know, we can work on multiple things at a time, I just would hate to commit to something and then not, no, I can't deliver on it. So I would rather try for the sooner date, if that's okay with the mayor and council.
Does that give you enough time to do what you need to do?
My team tells me it is.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm not called the question.
I always drill on my second. Your motion?
So my motion is to extend it to December 14th. All right, so my motion is to extend it to December 7 to 14.
Well, you need to withdraw your...
I withdraw my motion and make a motion to extend it to December 14.
Okay. So the motion, if I could put some words in your mouth.
You go right ahead.
The motion, okay, Mr. Sears, I close the public hearing, so in the same meeting, I can, under Robert rules of order, reopen the public hearing.
Or ask for a vote.
Well, I'll ask for a motion then to, is there a motion to reopen?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, reopen the public hearing. Any discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Okay, so I am, we have just voted to reopen this public hearing, so your motion would be to continue the public hearing until December the 14th, and that's...
That would be my second.
I'm sorry.
I would second that.
Okay. And that's a 6:30 in the evening meeting on December the 14th. Any discussion? I know this is what a lot of people, when they were looking for definitive answer today, we're going to, we're going to make sure you get that, but we're going to do it in a very timely, consistent manner. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here today.